Okay, ready?
Yep.
Ellie, can we have a roll call, please?
Kristi McBride.
Sure.
Kristi Marquez.
Here.
Kristi Diaz-Silka.
Here.
Vice President McAvoy.
President Lawson.
Here. Let's see, item 4.2, report out unclosed session from earlier this evening. There's item 3.1, the Board received information no action was taken. And item 3.2, the Board received information and no action was taken. So, welcome everybody to our last board meeting of the year, the school year. I posted a couple links in the chat for the agenda and the speakers cards, and I'll go ahead and keep posting those for those of you who are just joining. And just a reminder to the audience, you are muted when you come in. If you would like to speak to the Board, please fill out the Google Doc that, like I said, I'll post in the chat box. Please be sure to include your names so that we know who to unmute when something comes. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person per topic. If the item you would like to speak on is not on the agenda, you'll be called during the oral communication time and do the ground activity. You will be able to clear your comments, but we do not have a discussion on the item. If you're speaking on an item that is on the agenda, you'll be called on during the time that that item is being addressed. And as a reminder, because we are meeting via teleconference, all votes will be by roll call.
Jan, I don't, I don't notice any translator on.
It sells here.
Oh, I don't see her.
Does she need to be pulled up to panelist?
I can do that. Go ahead.
I don't see Gonzalo. He can raise his hand if he's here. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
I would like.
I have.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Dennis.
No, go ahead.
Okay, I was going to ask about 4.5, which is Measure U, 4.6, SIPSA, 4.8, RCA.
14.
And 4.9, what people thought about moving those to consent. And 14.9 was the personnel report.
So can you say that again, 14?
Yeah, 14.5, which is Measure U, 14.6, which is the SIPSA's, and this is the second time we've seen them. 14.8 is the RCA package. And then 14.9 is the personnel report. Dennis, I don't know if you had any additions?
Yeah, I had 14.4, because that's actually the Measure U. 14.5 is just.
Oh, do I have them wrong?
14.6 is Rocket Ship.
Uh. No, 14.
You know what? You know what, we need to look at the agenda that's. Because I was using agenda that's online. It might, it has been different than the PDF sometimes. A second.
I'm using the one that came out today at noon.
The SIPSA one needs to stay on action because we have some comment cards.
Um, let's just double check. Dennis, did you have any others while I'm looking?
Yeah, I wanted to see if everybody's okay moving 14.10 to consent.
Which is that one?
That's the contracts for superintendent and deputy superintendent.
Oh, yeah. Mm-hmm, I'm fine with that. So, yeah, you're right, so 14.4 is Measure U, so I had that wrong. You're right, so 14.4.
14.4 and 14.5 are both U.
Right.
Oh, right, 14.5 is Rocket Ship U. Okay, right, 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 that's where I got confused. Okay, yeah, so. So 14.4, 14.5, 14.8, 14.9, and 14.10, all to consent. Mm-hmm.
I'm okay with that.
Great, all right, well, I'll move the agenda with other changes.
So it was Alyssa and Dennis. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
McBride.
Aye.
Marquez.
Aye.
Kristi Diaz-Silka.
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy.
Aye.
President Lawson.
Aye. We go back to our speakers cards. It looks like cards. Okay, so we don't have any on oral communication. They're all on specific items, so we can move on to the bond program update.
Okay, I'm going to start sharing my screen. Host disabled participant screen sharing.
Okay. So. Let me see if I can go back over. So I'm going to move you over to the host right now.
Okay.
So you should now be able to.
Yep. Okay, can you guys see my screen? Okay, great. Dive into construction progress photo update. And a lot of these photos were actually taken today. So, starting with the 2950 Fair Oaks Avenue site, bathroom renovation in progress, wiring upgrades in progress, new flooring in select classrooms, and additional bathroom renovations. This is for ADA compliance. And some exterior paint. Henry Ford. So this picture kind of captures everything that we're doing in front of the school, the new expanded parking lot drop-off loop, new entrance to the school and administration. Zoomed in view, the expanded parking stalls. The new administration entrance. Near in completion. Different angle, and that would be the entrance to the admin. So if you were to walk through this door, you would walk into this room in the administration building. And then renovated restaurants. Henry Ford. Moving on to Kennedy modernization. Here's a classroom modernization in progress. And what one of the completed classroom modernizations looked like. And this is one of the science classrooms with the shower and eyewalk. Roosevelt, these are restroom renovations. New storm drain. And this is where the new lunch shelter is going to go. And then you can see the storm drain work ongoing in the top left corner and the seventh portable that was added there at the end with the darker roof. Adelante Selby's new admin. Since the last photo update, you can see the structural steel and kind of the expanded entryway. Another angle. And overhead where you can see the expansion. Taff School. You can see demo and grading is in progress. This is a view of where the new two-story classroom building is going to go. And then the new parking lot and drop-off loop. Hoover School. You can see the parking lot is really coming together. Oops, sorry. New expanded parking lot. And the gym structural steel. And so this picture doesn't really do justice of the size of this gym. If you look in the top right corner, you can see that those are very big RVs. You can see the little truck down there. This view kind of helps, kind of helps show how big this gym is, but if you are near Hoover, you want to drive by, it's pretty incredible. Then jump to our project progress tracking matrix. Do you guys see this document? Okay, great. And so a reminder that the yellow shows changes since the last time we shared this tracking matrix, I believe, a couple months ago. And so the Adalanta, or 3150 Granger Way, formerly Adalanta site, has received DSA certification. We received DSA approval. Clifford modernization plans. Construction agreement is actually on the agenda tonight, and we plan to start construction, you know, within a couple weeks, pending action on the construction agreement tonight. Fair Oaks, construction is in progress, and I shared some photos of that modern, or I'm sorry, I should say 2950 Fair Oaks, Fair Oaks site, formerly Fair Oaks School, but I shared some pictures of that site modernization this evening. Garfield received DSA approval. We just opened bids yesterday and plan to bring the construction agreements for the multi-prime project to the July 15th board meeting. Orion Alternative. Formerly John Gill. We received DSA approval and construction has just begun. 909 Roosevelt Avenue site, formerly Horace Hawes. Construction has been completed and that project is now in closeout. Henry Ford, constructions in progress, and I shared photos of that site today, tonight. Hoover as well, construction in progress. Shared photos of that project this evening. Kennedy Admin and Parking is in closeout. Kennedy Modernization, construction's in progress. McKinley and North Star, construction was completed. Both of those projects are in closeout. 815 Allerton Street, formerly Orion. Construction's completed and that project's in closeout. Roosevelt, we received DSA approval and construction has started. Roosevelt Asphalt completed. Roy Cloud. DSA has approved the plan set, and we are muscling through the legacy closeout. This is the last legacy closeout effort that's holding up a plan set. And we're expecting our final submission package to DSA either this week or beginning of next week, at the latest. Adalanta Selby Parking, complete.
So Will, for the audience, could you briefly explain what that meant? Like, why, why are you having to go back and do something?
Oh, you're talking Roy Cloud Legacy?
Yeah.
Yes, and so previously, the district's been doing projects with DSA for, you know, probably 50-plus years. And when we started this program, I believe there were about 30, 35 projects that were not certified with DSA, and so we've been going back and working with DSA to provide the documentation and site investigations needed to close out those legacy projects. And so although DSA has approved our new plan set for Roy Cloud, they will not stamp it out and allow us to begin construction until we close out what is called a legacy project, one of the older Roy Cloud projects that did not receive certification. This project was one of the more complicated ones to dig up all of the previous documentation, but we're almost there.
Thank you.
Sir. Adalanta Selby Modernization, construction has started, and I shared some pictures of the new administration this evening. Taff Electrical, completed and closeout. Taff Modernization, a new two-story classroom building project. Construction has started, shared some pictures of the demo and grading this evening. And all of our other projects have been completed and closed out with certification. So you can see, when we started this program, this entire sheet was white, and we are starting to fill, fill the sheet up, and so we're really happy. A lot of construction this summer. I believe we have either 11 or 12 active construction sites, all going simultaneously this summer. That, does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the bond program?
Um, I have one. Oh, go ahead.
No, I was just unmuting to say that I couldn't see everybody, so. Go ahead, Alyssa.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so I just got a question. You know, are there any changes going on or thinking with the bond now that we're in this kind of COVID world? And the reason I ask is I see we are doing some bathroom remodels and renovations, and in thinking about equipment that goes in there, like faucets or soap dispensers or things like that. I don't know if there's an opportunity. I know that there's a facility subcommittee that's thinking about that, but it seems like there might be some things with, particularly with the bath. Anyway, I'm just wondering if you guys have talked about that at all, and if you have, if you could share a little bit about any of that. You know, in terms of just additional hygiene and sanitation and things like that, are there any changes going on to what we're doing in the bond per the world we're living in now? And particularly with the bathrooms, I think I'm interested in.
Yeah, as per our discipline, last week with the bond. The bond program is not handling the COVID-related adjustments, and so I understand that the district is, is handling that in another way. And I, you know, looked at Dawn or district staff to, you know, provide more updates on that.
Is that something the facilities subcommittee is handling?
Well, we're discussing, everything's on the table. But I think what Alyssa was referring to is if a restroom is being remodeled and it has a manual faucet, can that manual faucet be changed to a no-touch faucet? Things like that.
That, that's exactly what I'm talking about. If there's opportunities where, I know we had one plan pre-COVID, but if there's an opportunity to make a change, it doesn't cost a lot of money, and we think we're going to want to make the change anyway, just, you know, think about it. I was just wondering if that's on the table, because I see these bathrooms being pulled out and remodeled. You know, I'm thinking all of a sudden now by no-touch everything, right?
Yeah, there, there's opportunities, and we are in discussion about it.
Okay, thank you very much, and everything looks great. Thanks for all the work you're doing.
Anyone else have their comments or questions?
So Will, I love seeing all these pictures. It's really exciting to see the changes. I've been driving around trying to check out some of the sites lately, and it's exciting to see everything coming together. So thank you and your team and Dawn and everything for all the work you guys are doing right now.
We will have a lot more to share after summer. And we're excited to share that with you guys.
Okay, if there's no more comments or questions, we can move on. Thanks for the update, Will. I think we're moving into bond consent.
Have so moved?
Alyssa, is there a second?
Second, second.
Who got first? Cecilia?
That doesn't matter.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Kristi McBride.
Aye.
Kristi Marquez.
Aye.
Kristi Diaz-Silka.
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy.
Aye.
President Lawson.
Aye. Thank you, there's no items on bond action, so we can move into item 12.1, discussion on COVID-19.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Will.
All right, I'll begin. So, as you all know, we had our first webinar last week. We had it on Thursday in English, and we had the Spanish one on Friday. And this, this week, well, actually tomorrow, we have the special ed webinar. And Dr. Polino and her staff will be giving an overview of what the plan is when we return in August. The English webinar starts at 6 o'clock, and the Spanish one will be at 7:00. I believe Jorge Quintana sent out information already on this and also sent out information for questions ahead of time. So that'll take place tomorrow.
And Dr. Victor.
Yep.
Sorry to interrupt, but Kyle, you have to set as the host, so if I end and leave, I think it ends the meeting for all of us.
You just need to hand it back to me, so hover over my line on the far where my camera is, where it's more down, and it says, "Many hosts."
Great.
There you go, perfect, then.
Thank you, guys. Sorry about that.
That's okay, Will. So also, those, the, where was I? The webinars are on our webpage now. So, parents who were unable to attend last week webinars, you can go on to the webpage and hit the link, and you'll be able to see the webinar that took place last week. We also have 247 questions that we're in the process of answering, and it's our hope that by Friday they will be on the webpage also. They may be part A and part B, but they will be there. Some of them are questions that several people have, have asked the same questions, so we kind of lumped that together, those that are all the same, and so they'll all have the same response. So please look forward to those also. The next item regarding COVID-19 is we've been receiving emails from parents in regard to why can't we just start like some other school districts in the state of California, other counties that are just coming back, to just bring students back, and they're starting out with five days a week. So I'm going to let Wendy over, give you an overview on that, since we spoke about it on Monday, and she did some additional research to find out what these school districts are doing and the rationale of which, why they're doing it. So Wendy, I'll let you take it from here.
Okay, thank you, John. Well, I do want to say that I appreciate the input that our community contributes. You know, we feel like we're all in this together to a degree, although we are under certain guidelines that we have to take into account. So all information that comes into us, we do consider and take seriously and determine whether or not these options are viable. So there have been a few parents that have questioned why we are unable to return to normal five-day-a-week with all students on campus like we did prior to March 13th, and so that's what I would like to address tonight. Some of you have made heard that Marin County has communicated that they will be resuming school five days a week. Marin County has less restrictive guidelines than San Mateo County. I'm actually not sure how they're planning to meet the six-feet physical distancing guidelines set forth from the state. So I do have a call out to Marin County for clarification on that one point. Portola Valley and Woodside also have small class sizes and are planning to bring students back five days a week as well and are able to work within that six-feet physical distancing space within their classroom. So those are the three local districts right now that we're aware of that are seriously entertaining this idea. But I do want to know, to note that in the Redwood City School District, our class sizes range from, you know, approximately 24 to 31. So this is the reason why we need to lean towards a hybrid model and not bring students back five days a week. Documents that are driving our planning and decisions are the California Department of Education Plan to Reopen Schools document and the California Department of Public Health Resources. So those can be Googled and found, or people can email me if they're interested, and I can send them direct links. But it would be really helpful if all people that are highly interested in the reasons and the rationale on why we're moving in this direction could read this information. It does change, I, we're ready to pivot as we need to, but flexibility is the name of the game here, we're learning. And, but we do want people to educate themselves about the struggles that we're having as a district to try and, you know, marry all of these forces together. We badly want students to return to school, and we miss everybody and want them to return, but we do have to ensure the safety of our students and our workforce. We do work in a union environment, and that does require the district to provide a safe working environment within the guidelines of our union contracts, and in this case, under what our county is recommending. So it is clear the county health guidelines for San Mateo County needs to ensure that students and staff are interacting six feet apart. In calculating the square footage of our classrooms, we are able to meet the recommendations of allowing 12 students to be in the classroom at a time. The guidelines also speak to the need for a stable cohort of 12 students. Yet, we do recognize that parents will likely alter the stable cohort group as they navigate their own schedules and childcare needs. I'm a parent myself, I'm going to be battling the same problem. But from a school district's perspective, we can really only control what we can do at school. So, local K-8 school districts, similar to ours, that are, that are kindergarten through eighth grade, like San Carlos, for example, already voted on a hybrid model similar to ours. Belmont-Redwood Shores is also proposing a similar model. But what we're trying to do is just use the guidelines derived from data, from science, to support our decisions, as we are not scientists, we're educators, and we need to rely on the latest information from the state to guide our work. So with all of that information and what we know right now, the proposed A-B hybrid schedule model meets the requirements outlined in the county health guides of adhering to six-feet physical distancing. And so that is something we're really working towards and entertaining and planning to bring to the Board in July so that parents can make a appropriate decision for their family with all things considered. So I wanted to give the Board an update on some of the research that has been happening this week in regards to that topic.
Are there any questions from any Board members? Because I know you all received the same emails also.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you very much, Wendy, for following up. I know that I had sent you an email and asked if you could follow up with some of the other counties and school districts that we were getting emails about that were doing things differently than us. And just to clarify, you know, they're either operating under different health rules than we are here in San Mateo County, or they already have smaller class sizes and maybe even larger classrooms, so they can accommodate the six feet. So that was sort of my gut feel from a mathematics standpoint, but I'm glad that you were able to clarify it for us. Because of course, as you said, I mean, the Board and superintendent and staff, we're all interested as much as possible to get more kids on campus. and staff, we're all interested as much as possible to get more kids on campus as soon as we can safely and healthy, healthy-wise. But, you know, we've got to follow the guidelines. So anyway, thank you very much for following up. I really appreciate that information.
You're welcome.
So, sorry, Wendy, I know that you said San Carlos approved theirs this week. I was looking at their presentation, and it appears that their hybrid model is AM-PM and not the two days on, two days or three days off. Like, we're looking at, do you have any idea what their plan is for cleaning? Because that's really our primarily largest hurdle in not being able to do something like that.
Right. Actually, San Carlos is only offering the AM-PM for their primary grades, and they are putting considerable amount of custodial supports into that model. Their second through eighth grade will be coming back in an A-B model, similar to our ideas. I think they might be slightly off, but the same idea of A, Group A and Group B, so two different stable cohorts in different parts of the week.
And if I read it correctly, it looks like what they were proposing is PK through first grade for the first six weeks to come back AM-PM. And actually, it's funny, I saw that as well, and I sent a question. How can they do that with the cleaning that's required in between the AM and PM? So I know that the Facility Subcommittee is looking at some of that, because we've also had some of our PK and kindergarten teachers ask if there was a way to do this, because they would like to sort of get, you know, see their students every day for shorter amounts of time as possible. But I think the cleaning is the issue for us, if I understand it. And then also, I had concerns with working parents. Is it better to have longer, a couple of days, or every day for a couple of hours if you were looking at that primary grade? So I think there's some questions that I know I put back to our staff and said, could we, you know, at least explore this and get some answers to see what we can do. But I do think the cleaning is going to be a sickler, so I'm kind of curious for San Carlos, how they're going to make that work.
They put more resources into their custodial staff, from what I understand.
Clean, or a clean between, yeah. They can do a clean between AM and PM in an hour or something?
I don't know the exact time period. Maybe you do, Wendy, but I know they put additional resources into the custodial staff.
Right. So we have to remember, they have very few schools. That's a major piece. They only have four, four, plus the charter school, so five elementary settings. And so obviously, fewer classrooms, fewer, you know. So, and the question is, to bring two separate cohorts, they do have to do what we are calling a deep cleaning. There's the lighter cleaning and then the deep cleaning. There's still intense cleanings. But I do know that they did revert more funds into their custodial staff, but they also have fewer spaces, considerably fewer spaces than we do.
And my understanding is if we were to do the same thing, it would be multiple millions of dollars invested into cleaning staff. Is that correct?
That would be true. We will likely need to increase our custodial staff anyway, but that would exponentially increase their need, the need, if we're going to go that route.
So everyone is on the count, I'm talking, counting the San Mateo is grappling with this. I know San Mateo Foster City is going in the same A-B cohort that we're doing also. I know that it's being presented tomorrow night, and they're grappling not only with the, you know, the AM-PM with the kindergarteners, but they're also grappling with, as we all are, the childcare piece. And I know Alyssa, and I know you'll probably talk about this later, the meeting that you and Maria and I were in yesterday, yeah, yesterday, these days, yesterday with the city, how we, you know, have stressed how much we need assistance in this arena for us. Because, you know, with the cohorts for the childcare, they can come from different classrooms, but then they have to be in that cohort for at least, you know, three weeks before anything changes. So as we move down through the steps and get further along, provided that, as was said in yesterday's superintendent's meeting, with lower virus being detected in individuals and lower patients in the hospitals and the ICUs, then we can move into different steps where hopefully, I, you know, again, hope, but hopefully, you know, we can, you know, get to that step where we can bring back many children, depending on what step we are in. Hopefully, with step three, once you're in step three, and you're pretty much on your way. But as we were warned yesterday, we are not the ones that are, just ourselves that will make that decision. It will be the county health department that will assist us with this and giving us information in regard to those people who have tested positive, how many people are in hospitals, and can we move forward, knowing that it has declined. So I know you all get on different conversations with other elected officials that are going through the same process at this point in time. So you can also share that, you know, among, among, tonight, among others, that have come up in those conversations that you've had, because there are many of you that are elected officials from board members, or elected officials that are on county council, elected officials that are on our own Redwood City Council, that are on those meetings that you go to. So whatever you can share with the public would really be interesting. Any other items regarding COVID-19? As, as we alluded to.
Maybe I'll just add, John, to what you just said. So, you know, Patti Ortiz is leading our childcare Subcommittee, and, and she and I spoke, she's reached out to some others, Redwood City 2020 and the city and all of that. And then John was relating that we had a meeting with the, with a couple of the city council folks and the high school district, and again, mentioned childcare and our need to get assistance with that. So we are definitely actively working with our community partners, trying to find others to help us solve the childcare. So I did want to just say that we know that that's a piece, because particularly if we go with the A-B schedule, the days that students are off, you know, they need assistance. So we're hoping that someone else will take the lead on this, and we've got some, some irons in the fire, I guess, so to speak. So hopefully, we'll have some good news to report in the next couple of weeks about some others taking the lead on some childcare, right?
Yep.
Definitely.
Yeah, and there's also a similar group as part of the county recovery effort. And I think Justelle Hale is one of the members. So since she was in our conversation, maybe she could also share that with us. I did have one question, John, and that was about the preschools. Have you found out any more about what our plans are for them, since they are totally different?
The guidelines came out this morning, if I, if I'm correct. And we're still looking at those guidelines and wanting to get further information. So hopefully, we will have that by the end of the week, because the person who is in charge at the county office of Ed wanted to read through them more carefully before she responded back with questions that Ed and I had. And also Wendy had some questions regarding preschool. So hopefully, we'll have that by Friday.
Okay, yeah, I was just, yeah, I was just wondering again about the students that have, you know, the families that have children in preschool, elementary and high school, and how that whole schedule is going to work out. Are we thinking of having two days for the kids, or are we going to do like San Carlos? But I guess you'll tell us that as more information becomes available.
Correct. We will. We will. So just a reminder again, tomorrow night is special education. I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions about special ed. Dr. Polino and her staff have been working diligently on getting that presentation ready. And remember, 6:00 is the English presentation, 7:00 is the Spanish.
And you guys did a really good job on the Spanish one. I saw some of the comments, and I watched the presentation. I think that a lot of parents had similar questions, and you guys did a very good job answering them. Now we just have to go through all those questions that they also submitted.
Now we're doing the answering of the Spanish ones too, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I'll just echo that. I was on the English version of the presentation, and I thought it was really, really good. I know I learned more details from the different committees, so that was good for me to hear, and I think the parents certainly appreciated that. I was curious, you know how many parents we had call in for the English and then the Spanish version? We couldn't see that on our Zoom, so somebody must have been able to see the number of participants.
You had?
I haven't probably have it.
It's in a different notebook. For the English, it was about 380, and for Spanish, it was about 70, I think.
Yeah. Good. I mean, that's, that's more parents than we get to any parent forum we've had. We have, when, you know, when you have to show up in person, it's a lot harder. So it's nice when they can dial in and actually be a part of it.
Right. Definitely.
So on that note, we do have a couple speakers cards on the COVID piece. Do we want to take those now?
Sure.
So first, we have Catherine Stewart. And just a reminder to our speakers, we are limiting public comments to three minutes. Hi, Catherine, go ahead.
Hi, yes, thank you. I had a couple of questions. One was about Mandarin immersion and other people, if we would have enough, how many hours per day, and how many total hours will we have of interactive teachers, if we have teachers teaching online, like on Zoom, how much of that will be interactive as opposed to just watching a video? And then my other question is, I'm not sure if I figured out the square feet correctly, but could someone help explain to me the square feet of how many students are in a classroom? I looked at 12 students and one teacher, and I, I thought that if everybody had to be six feet apart, that it would look like, you know, two dots, and two dots and two dots, and then a middle row for a walkway, a little border of a... Or can you show a picture? Because I think some people are having a little hard time picturing how that would, because the kids have to be able to get out and walk down and go to the bathroom. So it sounds like you'd need to have a middle row so that the people who were there could get out. So can you show a picture or diagram of how that would work? I think it would help for a lot of people to understand what 12 kids in a classroom looks like with one teacher.
We don't have a diagram with us right now, Catherine, but we'll see what we can do. Okay?
Okay, because I was just thinking, you know, thinking just about the choreography of getting the kids used to the idea of when you need to get, raise your hand to go to the bathroom, that there'd be an aisle in the middle, you would just go to your right and go down. And if you were closest to the window, you would go to the right to go closest to the window. And if you're closest to the door, you'd go, you'd go left to go closest to the aisle down to the door, and that kind of thing. I mean, just a lot of little practicalities, but I think some of the kids could sort of start getting the idea, if the parents knew what the idea was, and that might help. Also, the question is, how soon can we say, if we're not planning on coming back until a vaccine, how soon can we say that? So you know how many parents are opting to be distance learning or online only, so you'd leave more room for the parents who have to have their kid in the classroom?
That's a very good question. So what we're doing, are you, are you asking about your commitment, your commitment to online learning, or your commitment to coming back to the hybrid?
Well, for, for, because I think as soon as you know how many people are 100% not coming back, except for online with distance learning, then you know how many people will be left in the classroom, like a classroom out of 30 kids. If 10 parents could keep their kid home, then you'd only have 20 kids to split. And you kind of know what you're working with a little easier that much sooner.
Right. So what we're doing is on July 15th, we're presenting the plan to the board, every bit of the plan to the board. That's the only item, I hope that's on the July 15th, but I'm sure there'll be something about construction on there. With that being said, right after that meeting, we have got to get a commitment from parents on which model they're going to choose. So we will be sending out a different type of a survey, which will probably be done via the, your phone, and we'll get more information to you prior to that time. The other item that has come up that parents have questioned about recently is what about home teaching? For those parents who want to do home teaching, are we going to be, are they going to be able to do that, especially if some of them determine that they want to do their own bubble or their own cohort, where several of them are doing it together? At this point in time, we are, that's one thing that Liz Wolf is looking into, and we're having a meeting with another member from another county that is doing that also. So there is lots of information that we still have to take in prior to July 15th, when we reveal the, it's still a draft, because why I say it's a draft, it's because we may have to pivot at any time if, if the order, health order is safe, that we have to go to total distance learning. But there will be information regarding the models that parents can choose from, and then they need to make a commitment. And once we have the commitment, then we have numbers, and so we can go forward in answering questions like you just asked. If you have not as many children in that classroom, that would normally be there because parents are keeping the kids at home, does that allow for more students to come in to that class that you would normally have, you know, one on A schedule and one on B schedule? And we would have that information at that time, once we get the commitments back from the parents.
Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine. Speaker is Linda Elkins. I believe it's Linda E.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So I just wanted to share, there was a, Contra Costa County came out with a guidance on the 22nd, which would be Monday. And the interesting thing in their guidance is that it said there needs to be six feet between students and adults and four feet between students and students. Yeah, so I don't know if that's maybe something to look at. They also said masks for ages three to 11 are strongly encouraged but not required. So that was the first time I had seen less than six, so that might be worth, something worth looking at and seeing how they're doing that.
So that was Contra Costa County. That's the order that they received from their health officer. Just as in Marin, the Marin order says four to six feet. It does not say six. Our order still indicates six feet social distancing. If you read the last one that came out, I think it was the 17th of June, "Social distancing is defined as maintaining at least six-foot social distancing for individuals." That's exactly, it's in the order. It has not changed yet for us in San Mateo County.
Okay, so it's the, hmm, it's the health order of San Mateo County that's driving the school reopening plan. So we would need to talk to San Mateo County about...
When it comes to, when it comes to the social distancing and the mask piece, the mask piece, I think if you read the order that now is in existence, it's 12 years and younger do not have to have one. But our pandemic framework from the county office of Ed, which all San Mateo County school districts are following, are, there are percentage times for each grade. For example, in kindergarten, the child should be, children should be wearing it for about 25% of the time, if they can. And then it goes up to first grade. First grade, try and wear it for 50% of the time. Then it goes to second grade, start at 75% of the time. And when you hit the third and fourth grade, people should be using it at 100% of the time. So it varies from county to county.
Is it, with the emails, and I obviously don't know the percentage that you've gotten from parents in favor of five days a week, is there a position to push on the county based on the information from these other counties?
Yes. Can you ask that question again?
You're asking about opening five days a week?
Well, I'm just, I guess my question is, like, are, since Redwood City has gotten feedback on getting kids back to school as much as possible, and it looks like other counties are able to do that based on what their health rules are around four to six weeks, can our school district push the county to adopt what Contra Costa or Marin has?
I guess you have the freedom to talk to the... I guess you have the freedom to talk to the, to talk to the county health officer. Yeah. We are following, like I said, we follow the health orders. And we're also following the framework that was put out by the county office of education, which also follows the state department of ed. And we also follow the guidelines from the California Department of Health. And they're all pretty much aligned, and they all talk about that six feet social distancing piece. The mask piece ranges differently from county to county. There are some counties that want, you know, once you write, walk outside your door, you should have a mask on. For children, it's different, depending on the age, but it varies from county to county.
Can I just add something from our, actually Janet or Dennis could, or actually anyone could add the same thing, but
During those calls.
So basically, at this point, San Mateo County has moved in the direction through a variance that we've gotten to align with the state requirement. So it's actually the state requirements that are the six feet with the face covering, along with all the other documents that Wendy mentioned coming out of the education department. So I am not clear how Marin and Contra Costa are coming up with different numbers. So they may be in what's called a different phase of the state plan. So, you know, the state has different phases, and when you're in a phase, then you're following certain requirements. And so San Mateo County actually got a variance to be part of the state, because we actually probably should be more restrictive with our numbers, if you look at the guidelines of the state. But because some of our numbers were okay, from a health perspective, we were able to get the variance. So the idea is now, if you have concerns, you're actually supposed to be calling the state, if I understand it correctly. And maybe Janet, Dennis, Maria, Cecilia, if you want to add to that. Because I know this came up in our recent Wednesday call with Dr. Murrow and with the county manager, along with their attorneys, that they are still answering some calls. But I think they really want to move in the direction that this is a state requirement. And I will say that I believe the requirements are set from a health perspective. From all that I've read and heard and talked to from the health experts around epidemiology and viruses and all that, what they're saying is that if we give a six-foot buffer and we're wearing face coverings and we're washing our hands, those are probably the best things that we can be doing to help prevent contracting and spreading the virus. And so although I think we all want kids to come back to school in a more normal environment, we also have to recognize that, you know, we're part of the collective good, and we have also responsibility to our staff and our students to set an example, right? Of what's being asked by everybody in terms of providing a health and safety environment. So obviously, if the state or other health people, all of a sudden say, hey, the numbers are looking great. They're down. We can go to, you know, two feet or three feet, no face covering. We would more than willing jump in and do that. But I think at this point, all the guidelines I've seen, I personally could not go and advocate for something less restrictive.
Yeah, and I, you know, I was speaking this week with a behavioral specialist that works for Palo Alto Medical Foundation. He was telling me about just the increase of calls that he's gotten from parents, because it is really hard for the kids to be home, and it's hard for the parents to have kids at home. And so we know behavior problems have increased. We know that for mental health reasons, it's really important for our kids to be back on campus and with their friends and with their teachers. But, you know, he even pointed out knowing and understanding about this virus, and he's a parent in the San Carlos district. So he's looking at it from the medical perspective and also the parent perspective. He says it's absolutely not possible to open up five days a week right now. The best we can do is the AB that we're looking at. And then on top of that, understanding that this virus is impacting the Latino community at an incredibly amazing rate, higher than any other group. And if you look at our population, you know, we have a high Latino population, and we need to think about the safety of that community and not exposing them to the virus and having them bring it back to their families also, who are at greater risk. So those are all things that we're measuring, and we have to follow our county and state guidelines. And other counties might be doing something a little bit different. They might have the resources to be able to do that, but we have to work within our boundaries and the resources that we have.
And then also, and then also take a look at the California Department of Public Health. They have the guidance that they sent out on June 12th, and it's very delineated in there about the six feet social distancing, about the masks and all that. And this is for schools and reopening and other programs at schools opening. So it's online, you can get it online. And it's something that they work directly with California Department of Ed. And of course, it all trickles down to the county, county office of education.
John, is it possible to add those links to the page that Jorge is working on?
Sure.
Because I think a lot of parents have questions, and you know, if we had those links
I think Jorge is on the call, if I'm not mistaken, so he could probably do that.
Yeah, also, it's worth noting that in Contra Costa County, their numbers are changing, so they may not be able to do that. And I'm not sure, like Lisa said, how they're getting to the four feet, being that the governor said we had to follow what the state said as a minimum, and we could be more restrictive, not less, so I don't know. We'll have to see.
Linda, does the board have any other comments or questions on the COVID-19 item?
You know, just one thing to end on a positive note that I've been thinking about, is I think on the upside of all of this, when the students are on campus with their teacher, they'll be looking at a class size of 12 to one. And think of how long we've been at, you know, parents have asked for this, teachers have asked for this, to have smaller class sizes, so they can spend more one-on-one and really high quality, high quantity time with kids. And so, you know, it'll be interesting to see, like, I think it'll be a really impactful couple of days that the kids have with their teacher. So I just want to end on that plus. I think there are some pluses in all of this. And I know, John, in talking to you and the team, I think we should not think of what you're going to see in the fall as what we saw in the spring, because I know that our school district will be much more prepared. There's exciting curriculum and, you know, all sorts of things that the teachers and the staff will be more prepared to deliver. So I think with the two days on campus and then the three days of the distant learning, I think the distant learning will be a lot more engaging and interesting and all that. I mean, I still think there's the issue of somebody needs to be watching the kids. So that's an issue we're trying to help with, with childcare. But anyway, I think there's a lot, you know, there can be a lot of good things with this.
So we did have one more speaker's card sneak in, and I know she was trying to get in last week also. So Maria Stockton.
I think it's just this one.
Hi Maria.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to take a quick minute or two to say that today Wendy Kelly met with us in our EERC meeting, and the majority of the time was taken of talking about needs for the coronavirus, you know, taking over. And, you know, I think it was a very positive meeting. I think Wendy was open to allowing us to give some suggestions of thinking outside the box, which will center some of those ideas. Our concerns are the legislative just passed that, pardon me, they just passed that budget deal where our schools are going to be fully funded for this year. And we understand that this year, you know, this is, you know, we, our concern is not only this year, but at the year after, the impacts of this year. And that's one thing I want the board members and the district to really, really think about. Any permanent things such as layoffs, I can almost guarantee you, anybody that gets laid off right now will not be returning to the school district when things get better. And you, you know, unless you're making a permanent change to a program, these are all temporary things. And if you have the funding, you know, we'd like you to look at keeping as many people as possible in paid status. We are coming up with some very creative ideas of how to use almost all of our classified employees into, you know, an MOU that your job description is going to be a little different this year, and your job duties are. But we're here to assist the district in what they need, and that's online as well as on-site. And so we want to thank Wendy Kelly for starting that conversation today. We're having another meeting next week to talk about other issues. But we do hope that there will be a forum that we can come together to find out exactly what the district needs, so we can try and find ways, creative ways of utilizing our classified employees to the max. Thank you.
Thanks Maria.
Wendy, did you want to say something about that?
Yes, if you don't mind. And I do want to thank Maria Stockton and her team for a great productive conversation today. And to applaud CSEA's representation on the reopening schools committees that they serve on. It's really important to have the voices of our union members, teachers and classified staff. And I'm really appreciative of the out-of-the-box thinking that we're exploring, because we do value all of our staff, and we know that there is a shortage of staff around the Bay Area in general. And we want to make sure that we have what we need for our students and the staff to support them. So sometimes with CSEA, you know, things are sort of lockstep. And I'm really appreciative that we're having these great conversations about other duties and things that we still need that can be accomplished in different ways. So we'll be bringing you some ideas at a future meeting. Right now, we're brainstorming, but it was a really good conversation. So thank you, Maria.
Good, great. Thank you.
Board ready to move on, or were there any more comments or questions? Yeah, okay. We can move on to consent. And just a reminder, consent items also include 14.4, 14.5, 14.8, 14.9, and 14.10. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Maria? Is there a second?
Second.
Dennis? Eliana, roll call vote, please.
Priscilla McBride.
Hi.
Priscilla Marquez.
Hi.
Priscilla Diaz Soca.
Hi.
Vice President McAvoy.
Hi.
President Lawson.
Hi. Thank you. Item 14.1, approval of COVID-19 executive order operations written report.
Well, this was reviewed last week, and so I'm not sure if there's any questions or outstanding items, but it was in response to, rather than our annual LCAP, it was just how our district responding to the emergency situation and the march through the end of May to June, I guess. So I think I included all, any feedback that you've given me? Otherwise, I'm not sure if there's any questions regarding that.
Great. Thank you very much.
So I, so at some point, it does need to be approved, though, right? This is an item.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I'll move it along. How about that?
A motion from Alicia. Is there a second?
Second.
That was Cecilia. Roll call vote, please.
Priscilla McBride.
Hi.
Priscilla Marquez.
Hi.
Priscilla Diaz Soca.
Hi.
Vice President McAvoy.
Hi.
President Lawson.
Hi. We are on to item 14.2, approval of the 2020-21 proposed budget.
So, good evening. The 14, the proposed budget for 2021 is also being presented today for board adoption. There's only one change in the, in the budget, and particularly the multi-year projection from the June 10 presentation. And tonight, I will just kind of give you an update of the state budget and what would be the impact on that on our own district budget, although it's not included in the proposed budget for now. So I have a few slides on the PowerPoint, if I may share that with you tonight. So
Priscilla, I got to meet you, the host.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So So as I mentioned, the only change between the June 10 and today's presentation is the increase in the contribution from the RDA funds to the general fund of 2.4 million. This is to include in the reserves or in the components of ending fund balance the potential ongoing cost of future negotiation settlements. So in this, in this budget, we have only included the ongoing cost for the RCTA, which was settled before the budget development. So the one that was approved today, the RCEA is not in this budget yet, and neither the CSEA, which is still pending at this point. So what we've done is to assign or set aside funds and the components of fund balance to cover potential ongoing costs for these pending negotiations. So that's the only change from the June 10, 2020 presentation. So what I wanted to show to you today are the terms of the agreement between the governor and the legislature. So they have reserved spending for K to 14 schools. So what that means is that for the local control funding formula, the 10% cut was eliminated, but there's also no COLA. So it's the same as the 2019, 2020 level. So what would be the impact of these to the proposed budget? So what will happen, either at first interim or within 45 days from the state budget adoption, we, I may be presenting to you all the changes to the proposed budget today. So the impact of the removal of the 10% cut is that we're also going to be saving the basic aid fair share. So they cut the minimum state aid for us by 10%, so we will recover that back. But because the district authorized charter schools, we'll have to also recalculate their LCFF funding, we may also be sharing higher in lieu taxes. So those two would be offsetting. So the second items that included in this agreement is our deferrals. So the deferrals are actually more than what was presented during the May revision. So during May revision, the proposed deferrals of the state aid apportionment is only for the month, portion of April, May, and June. So this time, the deferrals will be February, March, April, May, and it will be paid in August, September, October, and November. So there's, there's a large amount of the state aid apportionment that will be deferred. So for the state aid, the LCFF or non-basic aid districts are going to be heavily impacted by these. But for us, it's only that minimum state aid portion that will be deferred. However, we received a letter from the San Mateo County Controller's Office about a potential change in the way the property taxes are apportioned to school districts and other taxing agencies. And this is due to the governor's executive order, which basically suspended the assessment of penalties and interest for late payment of property taxes. So with this suspension, they anticipate that they may not be able to collect in full the taxes that are due in December and April. And taxpayers may avail of these, because there's no penalties and interest. So with that, you know, the historical allocation where they are providing 50% of the property tax estimate to school district by December, and then additional 40% or a total of 90% by April, that may not happen, depending on how much is collected in December. But because we are a teeter county, they guarantee that 100% of the total estimated collection will still be received in June. that 100% of the total estimated collection will still be received in June. So, what the county is proposing, depending again with the amount of collection, if they don't have enough amount collected in December or in April, what they're going to do is prioritize what will be paid first. So, what they're saying is that they're going to pay the special charges first and debts, such as the GO bond principal and interest. And then, if there's remaining money, then it will be allocated to the school districts. So, because of these, and because we're basic aid, we're, you know, highly now dependent on local property tax allocation, the school district may have cash flow problem mid-year. So, if we're not going to get our 90%, I mean, 50% allocation by December and then 90% by April, we may have difficulty meeting our monthly obligations. So, we may be looking at, again, a combination of internal, you know, temporary inter-fund borrowings. And if that's still not sufficient, we may consider outside borrowings mid-year in the 2021 year. But because we're guaranteed 100% allocation by June 30, we are going to repay whatever outside borrowing or inter-fund borrowings that we're going to be getting. So, that's what we anticipate next year in terms of cash flow projections. So, then, on the agreement, there's also the learning loss mitigation funding from the Federal Cares Act. So, this is conditioned upon the adoption of the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. This is new, and, oh, I'm sorry. So, this one is new, and it needs to be adopted by September 30. So, the State Board of Education is required to develop a template by August, and so, we have 30 days, assuming it will be completed by August 31. So, we have 30 days to adopt these form. So, and then the LCAP...
Priscilla, Priscilla, before you go on?
Yeah.
The other item, I think, so if you could comment, is nobody knows how much each district's going to get, right? It's a variable amount, like a subject to somebody...
Yeah. So, right now, for the learning loss mitigation, it's coming from my calculator. So, if you're going to go to the CDE website right now, there's like two calculations that are available in there. One is for the ESER funding, which is part of the Cares Act. And if you look at Redwood City School District, it would show that the district will have about 1.1 million in ESER funding. On the other hand, the learning loss mitigation, there's a calculated amount there of 3.2 million. So, however, we're still waiting for the trailer bill and make sure that the preliminary calculation that is in there is final. And so, we are still working with the county office. We had the meeting with them yesterday, and so they're going to follow up with the CDE, if they're going to come up with specific guidelines and whether those numbers will become final. So, the next one, we're not going to have the local control, the normal three-year LCAP that we used to prepare. This is no longer required for the 2021 fiscal year. We just need to adopt the, you know, there's like a top page, about three pages on the LCAP. It's called the LCFF Budget Overview for Parents, and that still needs to be submitted by December 15. So, and then the other thing that remains in this final agreement between the governor and the legislature is the Special Education Increase Funding. So, the Special AB602 base funding is increased from 557 per ADA to 625 per ADA. And then, there's a significant amount of increase in the low incidence disabilities cost pool. However, this money does not directly flow to the districts, because it goes to the SULPA. And so, each SULPA has different ways of allocating the funding. So, some have high-cost pool, like we do, and say it does not directly come to the district. But there will be an increase in the allocation. So, the CalSTRS and CALPRs buy down, so the rates that will be used for the June 10 presentation remains also. So, there's still going to be a reduction in the CalSTRS and CALPRs employer contribution. The rest of the items on the agreement are like the ADA Hold Harmless Provision, so that still remain, and other items like the Staff Certified and Classified Staff Protection. So, these will be the first interim adjustments, or if, you know, if we know about the federal funding, because that's really significant, then we will have to do the 45 days budget revision after the budget is enacted. So, I'm sorry. So, we are waiting for, we're expecting the trailer bills to be released this Friday, June 26, and then the governor will act on the budget by June 30. So, that's what I have. So, if there are any questions on the proposed budget?
I'm not seeing any from the board. Dennis, go ahead.
Yeah. First, thank you so much to you and your team. Doing the budget in a normal year is a Herculean effort, but now trying to do this all remotely with everybody at home, really complicated is quite a bit. So, thank you. The question I have is, what have you done with respect to COVID expenses and FEMA reimbursements for the budget?
So, up to date, we have already submitted the, our request, so that's about $870,000 that's submitted to FEMA. They have responded to me. The initial response was, you know, like a general statement that says it doesn't look like it's eligible. So, I have communicated back to them. I provided additional information to them and explained why I think it should be eligible for reimbursement. So, so far, we haven't gotten any response from them yet. So, that was the last communication with them.
So, is that $870,000 in the budget, so that if they don't pay us, it's covered? Or is that going to be a big negative surprise?
So, what happened with that number is that it's temporarily used in the emergency fund that we have. So, and then, part of the $870,000 was a commitment from one of the donors, I think, the Chan Zuckerberg.
Correct. That's 200K.
So, they have, I think they're going to fund part of the blended learning tools, so about 187 something thousand.
Right.
And then, the rest, we're using the emergency fund and hoping that we will get reimbursement. Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
So, we have some speaker cards that were accidentally marked as 14.6, but they're actually for 14.2. So, if there's no other comments or questions from the board, I don't see any, we can take these cards. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. So, the first speaker is Katie Gatz.
All right.
Okay. Katie, you're muted right now. Are you able to unmute?
Now I am. There was a moment there, where the unmute button hadn't appeared yet. I wanted to speak to 14.2 in the budget, because there's been some commentary recently on social media about the inequity, inequitable funding between the Mandarin Immersion and the Orion program, that is on page 32 of the budget, in terms of what is being paid to the school district. And I wanted to spend a moment just saying that there is other money that as a whole school, we have raised, that is part of the overall Orion budget, but that money gets paid directly to outside service providers. It doesn't run through the school district. Because the Mandarin Immersion program specifically raises money for a halftime teacher-coach, as well as classroom aides, in order to make sure that students are exposed to more native Mandarin speakers than they otherwise would be in our small program, otherwise it would just be the teachers. Parents raise money in order to support the education this way. Because these people are hired as employees, that money has to run through the school district. We can't hire aides and pay them ourselves. We actually looked a few years ago into what would it take to hire teachers from China to work as aides. And because employees need to run through the district, we weren't able to do that. And so, I just want folks to know that the Mandarin Immersion families on the Orion campus support the PTO. We donate to both places, and the budget that shows up as part of the district does not completely reflect all of the spending and donations and time and effort that go into the functioning of both of these programs on that campus. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Katie. Our next speaker is Sarah Rutherford Quatch. Hi, Sarah. Go ahead.
Yeah. Okay. So, I think Katie mostly covered it. So, I put my name in here, because I'm on the Orion Mandarin Immersion School Site Council. And I also wanted to add that as for the PTO, they basically fund, so for next year, it would be 2020, 2021. So, we're raising money as a PTO for that year, during that year. For the Mandarin Scholars, they raised the money for this year in the previous year. And so, there was a purposeful effort to try to fund things, to fund personnel, not through PTO, not through PTO, and not through Title I, so that if the money wasn't there, that we wouldn't have to cut personnel. So, I think that's also an important thing to bring up. And the other thing I would just add is that language immersion programs are really expensive, and most of the ones in this area in the peninsula were funded by big federal grants, but this one wasn't. And it's also not a 50-50 model, meaning that they're, about 75% of the families don't speak Mandarin at home. So, the teacher training and the coaching and the aides are super important to maintain the integrity of the model. And it's even more so now that we've merged with Orion, which is a parent participation campus, and they have, parents are able to get into the classroom, which is awesome. But for the Mandarin program, unless you speak Mandarin, there has been a norm that you do not volunteer in the classroom. Because if you do, if there's a bunch of English speakers in the classroom, then that also dilutes the language immersion model. So, the aides are also important, because we don't have the type of parent participation that the rest of the English strand has because of that. I think that's about it.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Megan O'Reilly-Green.
Hi.
Megan.
Go ahead.
So, I really wanted to say I appreciate all the board does to keep our children safe and, you know, provide them with a good education. I know it's really difficult times. So, I'm the mother of three children, and I'm speaking today as the interim co-president of the Starship PTO and the Community Building Chair of the Mandarin Immersion Program. And, you know, similar to what, you know, Katie and Sarah have said, I won't repeat what they said. But, you know, I think that this year, we've fielded a decent amount of accusations of unequal distribution of finances across Orion and Mandarin Immersion, so I wanted to, you know, speak to that. You know, and I kind of wanted to point out that, you know, the program was created, you know, by parents to provide a high-quality educational program that's available to anybody in the school district, regardless of, you know, what your test scores are, what neighborhood you live in. And this is something that we're, like, really proud of. We take really good care of our people, you know, across every racial and socioeconomic status in our program and on the campus. We worked hard, you know, to build partnerships and lift the community that we grew out of at John Gill. And, you know, part of our communities worked together. Part of that teacher-coach that we hired, we paid, you know, $65,000 to the district. You know, that teacher-coach works well, the teachers are one community. And so, you know, that's something that comes out as just benefiting us, but it also benefits the whole entire community in terms of, like, making the teacher, the teaching better and lifting, you know, kids' education that needs to be lifted. You know, and so, these accusations that we continually have to field, you know, of us not being fair, they not only hurt us personally and waste our energy, but they also hurt our program and our school. And when this hurts us, it hurts the district. So, you know, similar to what Katie, you know, and Sarah said, is that, you know, the reason we have to raise money, you know, to pay for these aides, is that without that, it would not be an immersion program. Kids need to hear the natural language between two speakers of a native language to technically be immersed in the program. And I know for Adelante, you know, there's able to be an arrangement for student-teachers, so that immersion program follows, you know, a different path. And I don't know if that's something that we could, you know, look into in the future, if there might be a different way of, you know, presenting this on the budget, so that other people can understand it better, you know. But the other thing that I wanted to mention is that, like, I live in a two-bedroom, 1,000-square-foot home. My three children share a bedroom. We have one bath, and yet, like, every time something comes up, it's like, it threatens the existence of our program, like, I'm asked to cut a $20,000 check. And, you know, I just, I think that there's an optics, you know, issue that we have, and we're continually, like, running up against it. You know, we contribute both to RCMIS as well as Orion Starship. We're happy to do that, even though some of the benefits that go into Orion, we don't see any particular benefit from them. We want to raise more money for them. We want to continue lifting people. I hope next year, as PTO Starship co-president, we can raise more funds for both programs. But the optics is an issue, and, you know, I feel like it's wasting time for both, all of us. So, I hope that it's something that we can work on, together with the school district in the coming year.
Thank you, Megan. Next speaker is Amy Wang. Hi, Amy. Go ahead.
Hi. Yes. My name's Amy. I'm also part of the Mandarin Immersion. And as you can probably see, there was a group of us that felt like we needed to speak today, because we saw a conver, bless you, we saw a conversation on Facebook that was concerning, and it wasn't the first time that we had seen something like that before. And like Megan alluded to, it's, you know, I guess my comment is more broad, in that seeing those kind of comments online is upsetting, because, one, they often are not based on all the facts. And there might be good intentions, but for example, the comment that we saw today was based on a couple of line items in the budget. And they were making statements about wide gaps in funding based on those couple of line items. But what they may not realize are many of the nuances that folks have brought up. And they may not realize that those line items don't capture all the funding. There is the School Site Council budget. There's other PTO dollars that aren't reflected in there. There's grants for community schools. It doesn't give you the full picture. And I don't know if any of us as individuals in the community have that full picture. I'm guessing that's why someone like Priscilla exists. And so, I would caution folks in the community to make inaccurate divisive remarks, when really, in these days, we should be working together. I think everyone cares about equity. I think everyone has good intentions. And so, it's very easy to scapegoat, but that's not going to help anybody. And so, I just would ask people to be careful in what they're putting out there, because when you put it out there, some folks take it as fact, and it's not helping to put those misfacts out there. Thank you.
Can I just ask, where was this posted on Facebook? Because I have not seen this.
Megan, can you, I'm not on the, I got a image of it sent to me, so I didn't see it specifically on Facebook, but I believe Megan saw it.
Megan, maybe you can send it...
To make sure it wasn't a district site, that it was someone's personal site, or... Anyway, so... anyway, so, so I think this is the first as a board member I've been hearing about the social media component of this. So anyway, just.
Oh, someone does, they just told me it was on Redwoods. Sorry, it said it was on Redwood City Say What.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And unfortunately, it's not the first time we've seen something like this. So we felt like it was important to speak up today.
So.
Thank you very much. And I'm sorry that that's going on.
Yeah. And unfortunately, that's not unusual for that group. So I understand where you're coming from of the frustration and kind of feeling knocked down. But
Yeah.
That's the first I've heard of it too. Um, we do have another speaker, Sue Jorgensen. Wait, Sue, yeah, Sue. Hi, Sue. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm so glad I'm following this train. I am the one responsible for that Facebook post. And after coming on the heels of four people who really don't know me and felt like I put incorrect information out there, I'm more than a little upset. Definitely spent my time getting nice and calm to talk about the inequity. Not feeling the transparency at all. I was just going based on Priscilla's budget. And we have Mandarin immersion coming in at 157,000 for 1920, 178,000 for the 2021 first school year. We have Orion coming in at 152 for the 1920. Very similar to the Mandarin immersion. And then this year they have 21243. I kept all my comments very professional. Nothing I said on there was inaccurate. I'm frustrated because I just wanted to talk about equity. And I think this is a prime time to discuss it, to follow four people from one program. And I wasn't even going to go after the, the Mandarin immersion, but it's wrong. This type of funding is wrong. We talk a lot about the inequity. I've talked to the board members. My kids go way back in the program. They are actually from Orion. And so when I see these kinds of discrepancies, it raises some red flags. You know that I work at Taft. The fundraising doesn't even compete. I had my daughter go to North Star. I never felt like a good North Star parent. Because when you go to North Star, they say, we would like this amount of money. I said, no. All of our students deserve that type of enrichment that North Star gets. I know that Linda Montez is working with the National Urban Alliance and says that all students should be treated as if they're gifted. I gave my money to RCEF because I know that it was distributed equally. This year, North Star had 236 for 1920. They're going into 2021 at 303,000. My daughter excelled at North Star. She's excelling straight A's up at Oregon. I'm very proud of her. But we have to address the equity issue. The fact that my students at Taft didn't get to go to the, what is the SEAL place? And you know, Wavo, because we couldn't get the, the number of parents to get fingerprinted. It was the first time that I have been there that they couldn't go. And it just goes on and on and on. And do the students, my newcomers, do they not deserve to have somebody, you know, working with them full time? Like it sounds like it is Mandarin immersion program. It's really upsetting. And then to say, oh, we're sorry you're, you're hearing that. It's like, they need to hear it. We all need to hear it. I was actually super calm before following those four people. So that is, I do want to spend a little bit of time on some good news. We've been, the librarians have been invited by the Redwood City Public Library to do community reads. Four of us have already gone down and done a recording. I look forward to sharing that information and the videos are actually very cute, very fun. You have a great group of librarians and we think outside the box a lot. I am a pretty good representative of the librarians. I am passionate. I want everything for these students, whether they're go to Taft or Kennedy, the Mandarin immersion. I want everything for them to be, to be equitable. And we're not going to get there if we just keep saying, oh, but the parents get to decide where their money goes. The parents get to decide where their money goes.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt your three minutes. Thank you. I appreciate you speaking tonight. And so that's the end of our comment cards. I don't know if the board had any other comments, otherwise this is on action for approval.
So moved.
Dennis?
Second.
Maria? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Sue McBride?
Aye.
Tracy Marquez?
Aye.
Tracy Diaz-Silken?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. Item 14.3, adoption of resolution 33, funding for preschool programs.
So this is a resolution for the funding for the next school year for the preschool program. And as I pointed out earlier, we have guidelines that we just received this morning and we'll, by we, Wendy Edna, who is the director of the preschool program and myself will be meeting to see how that'll look for next year. So Maria, we'll get back to everyone, all board members to let you know what that's going to look like. But this is the resolution that's in place for the budget.
If there's no comments or questions, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Maria?
Second.
Cecilia? In a vote, please.
Sue McBride?
Aye.
Marquez?
Aye.
Tracy Diaz-Silken?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. Let's see, 14.4 and five were moved to consent. 14.6 was recommended for consent, but we kept it because we thought we had comment cards. Although we don't. So I don't know if somebody wants to go ahead and move that. Alyssa, was that a so moved?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Maria, thank you. In a vote, please.
Tracy McBride?
Aye.
Tracy Marquez?
Aye.
Tracy Diaz-Silken?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. Thank you. Item 14.7. The new board policy on working remotely.
Thank you. So tonight I'm bringing forward to you a new board policy regarding working remotely. And it seems a little late, to be honest, because we were pivoting to remote working earlier, but we do have this board policy for you to review and hopefully approve tonight, you know, with discussion. Thank you very much to Alyssa and Janet, who serve on the policy committee that went through this document with me. But really the highlights for the working remotely board policy is to lay out the needs of the district to be able to approve remote work and to support staff that will be working remotely in certain situations. Showing proficiency in their work, the ability to meet deadlines, et cetera. And the supports that go with that. So the document in front of you outlines the, the various components of what that means, ensuring that we have responsiveness from, from the employee. Also discussing the confidentiality pieces that entail some positions to work from home and the, and the need to make sure you're on top of that as employees. And giving the ability to stop that arrangement should it be needed. And so those are some of the main highlights that you can see in this two-page document. Are there any questions?
This is probably a question for Kyle. Do employees log into like a VPN on the district website? So it's secure?
It depends upon what services they're accessing. So if they're just.
Elaborate.
So if they're just logging in to get to student work, they're more than likely going to log into Google Apps, which doesn't, doesn't require VPN access, but it's just, it's a website. It's secure. It has encryption on both ends. And so that the traffic can't be kind of sniffed or pilfered as it's going between the two sites. And that's how all of our teachers transmit traffic or information back and forth with students, because that is usually handled through Google Classroom. And in our, for students in grades three through eight, that's almost all of the traffic goes that way or through a secured Google Doc.
Great. Thank you.
So I'll go ahead and move this as part of the policy committee.
Thanks, Alyssa. Is there a second? Is that Cecilia? Is that Cecilia?
Yes.
And a roll call vote, please.
Tracy McBride?
Aye.
Tracy Diaz-Silken? I'm sorry, Tracy Marquez?
Aye.
Tracy Diaz-Silken?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. Let's see. So we have 14, eight, nine, and 10 went to consent. So we're on 14, 11. Resolution 34.
So that resolution is for 403B plan, the document to, for its reinstatement. Are there any questions? And Priscilla could ask, answer those questions if you have any.
Look, I see any questions? No. Not? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
You, Maria?
Second.
Is that Cecilia?
Yes.
Okay. And a roll call vote, please.
McBride?
Aye.
Tracy Marquez?
Aye.
Tracy Diaz-Silken?
Aye.
Vice President McAvoy?
Aye.
President Lawson?
Aye. All right. Thank you. Moving on to board reports, reports from board members and superintendents. I'm going to let you guys pipe in as you'd like, or I can start being a teacher and calling on you.
I can go first.
Go ahead, Cecilia.
Last week I attended actually my first call with the, the board members and Nancy McGee. And then I was also on the 101 with John and Alyssa. That's the only thing for my, for me.
Thank you, Cecilia. Maria?
I attended the webinar and the government relations committee or two by twos, where we talked about childcare as Alyssa mentioned, and we're going to continue those conversations. I think that was it.
Dennis or Alyssa?
I've been on lots of calls with county and others about all the things we talked about tonight. And then I did want to say with the two by two by two meeting with the city and the health, the high school district, the other item that came up is the city council will be moving forward on a flavored tobacco ban. So I think that's something we, I know. So we had already put forward a resolution supporting that. So they've got that from us because we had asked if they needed any additional support. But that also will be moving forward. So that's good news for our, health of our students. And yeah, that's, and then we've had policy conversations and LCAP conversations and other things, but just all over online. So thanks.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Okay, so Janet, Dr. Baker and I had a bond program manager's meeting last week. I thought Thursday night was fabulous. I thought everybody did a great job and we're rock stars. And then Monday I was part of the facilities and wellness team meeting. And what a dedicated group of people. I mean, they really are working hard, really thinking about everything that needs to be done, which was really great. And Alyssa, did you want to talk about Sabrato? Could you list that out?
Oh, that's right. Yeah. So we, yeah, so Dennis and Dr. Baker and I, we had a update with Sabrato. As a reminder, we have the potential workforce, housing and office combination with our neighbors that is going forward in the city process, the gatekeeper process. So it's really just kind of an update. They had some additional drawings, starting to make the buildings potentially look more real. Again, this is all something that, you know, if it does move forward and we get approval from the city, there would be a lot for us to do and talk about and approve. But at least everything seems to kind of be moving forward. And then let's see on the date. What was it? I think this, I don't, Dennis, do you have the date handy?
They were, yeah, I think.
I think I've got it in a different document.
I think it was August or September. They think it's going to go to the city council. And they want to be done with the process by the end of December. Of selecting.
One of the things, yeah, so one of the things that we actually do need to do is a survey out to our teachers and staff at some point. And we do have some templates around that, but I know Dr. Baker was saying that the timing's not right now. But it will be something that we'll need to get some information because that'll help define the need, what kind of units you might produce, whether they're studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms. So anyway, at some point we do need to do the survey out to staff. So that was one of the things that we said we would. I know, you know, Dr. Baker will be thinking about time wise when, when we can do this. And I did send out a couple of emails asking about other school districts that have templates that they've used. So we'll try to collect those as well. Yeah. Thanks, Dennis, for remembering that.
Janet, you'll talk about the boundary meeting? Okay, that's all I had.
Okay, yeah. So I'm pretty much a lot of all of the above. And then as Dennis mentioned, so this morning? Afternoon? Sometime today. Dennis and Dr. Baker and Jorge and I met with Zach, the demographer, to start looking at map number three to come to the board. And spent a lot of time on it, like really drilling into different streets and neighborhoods and looking at numbers. I'm, I'm feeling good about what we've put together. We're going to come back as a committee again next week to see what Zach pulls together. And then when does it come back to the board? I don't remember.
It comes back to the board, I believe.
A hearing?
On the 22nd, July 22nd, and then the 29th would be approval. But between that, I believe Jorge sent me a message that they start coming out, just a second for the community.
They come out starting the 6th, I believe.
Yes, yes, you are right. Right, July 6th, Monday the 6th, the third map is coming out. Friday, the 11th is community input on the website. July 22nd is a public hearing. And then July 29th is final board approval.
Yeah. So Dennis, I don't know if there's more you wanted to add to that. It was a really good meeting.
Just let people, just let people know we're working it.
Yeah, yeah, it was really good.
Also, I'd like to thank you. You spent like all day Friday climbing through all the data and it's very much appreciated. So thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I enjoyed basically like Google map walking myself through the entire city. So that was really fun, actually. That's all I have. Dr. Baker, do you have anything?
No, it's just the meetings that I go to with the superintendents and, and county people. So many of you attend those meetings also. So that's all right.
Great. So we can move on to 16-1, information on the county investment fund. Were there any questions or comments? Seeing none from Dennis, I think we can move on to 16-2. Contract update information and credit card summary. Any questions or comments? None. Okay. Correspondence?
We're getting a lot of emails. About boundary changes, the name for Adelante Selby. What else?
COVID.
Opening of schools.
Oh, COVID. Yes, of course, opening schools. Yeah, we're getting a lot of emails. Yeah, we're getting a lot of emails.
Yes.
And for those in the audience that, if you've emailed me, I promise you I have read your email, but I am just inundated with emails plus all the meetings I'm going to, so I haven't responded to a lot. But I have, I've read every single one of them, um, so I appreciate hearing from you all.
Yeah, I just want to say ditto about it. I, oh, go ahead, Maria.
I was just going to say that, that I haven't also had time to reply, but I have read him. There was also an invitation, I think you, um, also sent us about a meeting with a group of, uh, I think it's, uh, organizations and innovate schools.
Yeah, I think I got that today. It was after your email.
I'd also say thank you for, I mean, we do read everything we get. I try to respond to all of them, but sometimes when I get, you know, 10 in one day, it's hard to respond to all of them.
You're only getting 10?
Well, 10 on the same subject, I get, yeah, anyway, only 10. You know what I mean? They all come in in one hour and sometimes I miss a couple of them in my response, but I do try to get back to all of them. No, no, sometimes there's hundreds, Dennis, for goodness sakes.
Exactly.
Okay, other business suggested items for future agenda?
So.
Go ahead, John.
So what I wanted to say is that we really only need the 15th, the 22nd, and the 29th. I think I had, yeah, we don't.
For our month off.
Sorry.
Really don't need the July 8th. I just double-checked. I thought we were going to have to have something in regard to the boundary, but no, according to the meeting from today and also from Jorge sending me a text, it's not needed.
Okay with that.
I thought you would be.
So this is not an agenda item, but I, I think we have the data and I can't find it on the website, and I've received requests for it. We did a boundary survey, I believe, and parents are asking what happened to the boundary survey.
So let me check with Jorge. I know he's not on here right now.
Okay. I mean, you can, you can, if it, if it exists, if we can just put it on the website.
Okay, boundary survey.
Let's, Dennis, I'm sorry, what boundary survey?
Why, that's the question, because I.
Was it a boundary survey or boundary questions?
Uh, it might have been the questions.
Okay, let me find out.
Well, yeah, I, I think initially there was a not, there was a link where you could provide comments.
Right.
On the district website. And I know that that was there, I think, before we updated some of the capacity numbers and other sorts of things, but I, may have been taken off at some point, because I think I got some of those emails as well. So I think we just need to make sure that there's a place that people can still comment, right? And then those comments are collected, and then Jorge needs to make sure that we see those.
So, so I can help you. There is a document called Neighborhood Schools Boundary Change Study, uh, Community Input Form Number One, and, and it's dated June 9th. And it's, it's, it's got a green, um, top. I can send it to everybody.
So that, it's probably where they go on to make their comments. If I, it's probably similar to the one for the, like, the parent survey we have that's green on the top. So we're talking comments then, right? Hold, hold on, Jorge is, he's, he is listening, just texted me. He means the community input form. It's off now. The new comment form will be up on July 6th.
Okay.
Okay.
So the new comment form will be up when the third map is up?
That's what it said, that's what, yeah. Yeah.
I think some of the comments came in before we updated all the capacity figures. And so I think it's good if people can now look at map one, two, and three with the correct capacity numbers and then make comments. I think it'll help us make a better decision, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I said, I just, as I just said, the new comment form will be up on July 6th.
Okay, so the board agenda calendar.
President Lawson? I just, I'm sorry. Um, just the comments. Are we, um, thinking or maybe moving forward about moving to a different, different agenda form? I know that you guys had, um, board docs do a presentation. So is that something that would need to be, um, put in an agenda, or is that something that it's talked about offline? Just wondering.
No, to be perfectly honest, we haven't be able, we haven't been able to, um, have that meeting. I have not been able to attend it at the times. And I know Ellie had set up a meeting and then we went into COVID-19. So that is still something that we want to look at. Oh, it's echoing, something we want to look at because of the, um, what we're using right now is not amenable to, to our work. It's a lot more time spent on creating this document that you have now as for a board agenda item. And it'd be easier if we had board docs, which a lot of the other school districts are doing. We had already talked to Priscilla about it and having, you know, in the budget and so forth, but when we went to COVID-19, we just stopped everything. So that is something that needs to come back. And hopefully, when we're, um, back at the district office, whatever timeframes that will be put into place, we can start looking into it again. It would be a lot easier for all of us, including board members also, and the community when it comes to board docs.
That's, um, Tracy Marquez, we did have a conversation with one of the representatives from board docs. We did have a presentation about it before we went, or before we, before the 19. Um, and we were setting up to move on to the next step. Um, we talked to our business department, um, about what we needed to do on our end. However, that has been put on hold. And I have been contacted by the representative, but as of now, I haven't come to an agreement just because it's been, you know, extremely busy for all the administrators as of now.
And I know, like, for, for Sequoia, it was a really, um, smooth transition. So, I mean, obviously you guys have to make the decision, but, um, I, I don't think you guys would regret it. I mean, I really think it's, uh, much more user-friendly. And I know, like, um, sometimes you guys might have issues uploading documents. I, I just think it's just a really good, um, system personally. I mean, I, I use it at work, so.
Most of the school districts use it. Most of the school districts in the county use board docs. Or one of the very few.
I think if we're going to have the discussion, we should probably agendaize it.
Right, right.
I think that's what Cecilia was asking about. So I don't know, you know, at some point, it can circle back to us if you guys be needed.
Yeah.
So let us get more information on it. Let us get in tune with what exactly it has, then we can bring it back to the board. And probably Ellie also bring the representative in so that he can show the board the different functions that it does have.
Okay, I can agendaize the presentation through Ms. Baker.
Perfect.
Uh, President Lawson, before we move on to the next point, um, do we have a confirmation for the time for the board meetings in July?
That was what I was going to ask.
If you don't mind, and I'm going to ask board members, these are, these are not regular board meetings, so they are special meetings, so I would like to start them at 6:00, because we normally don't have regular board meetings in July. So if we could, they'd be special, but we start at 6:00.
So I would prefer 6:00. Maria, are you able to do that?
Uh, it depends on the week and my schedule, but I would say set them anyway.
Okay. So, um, do you, I mean, do you know your schedule right now for the 15th?
No, not yet. I haven't looked at it, so.
Okay. Dennis and Cecilia, what do you?
I'm fine.
I'm locked down.
Okay.
It's better for me, too.
Okay. That's what I was asking on the board agenda schedule, so. So if there's nothing else, that's the end of our agenda.
Okay.
We could get out before 9:00 if somebody makes a motion.
So moved.
Maria, Dennis, and Dennis is going to hold me to a roll call vote again, so go ahead.
Aye.
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 Everybody said aye. Elisa.
All right, we're going to mark that at, at 8:59, not 9:00.
Yay!
So see some of you tomorrow night for the webinar on special ed.
Correct.
9:00, um, otherwise, July 15th.
That's right. Some of you before then.
We'll see a lot of you around, yes, for sure.
Right, exactly.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Good everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Good night.